Welcome to the Battle of the Books Quiz Center. Study session on the book Starfish by Lisa Phipps. It's a middle grade book. I would say that it would be good for students between fourth or fifth grade up to maybe ninth. It's a big range, I know. I enjoyed it. Maybe a book that some of you also can relate to. I certainly did. Growing up and even now, just dealing with weight and society's and families perceptions of my weight and my own perception of my weight. And you know, I'm just, I've been a human yo-yo all my life. You can also see that I'm having fun with Snapchat. So just warning, I'm gonna be playing with some different filters because I found a whole bunch of filters with starfish on them, which I think is fun. Which is why I was an elementary school teacher, because I like to do silly things. Also, public service announcement. Some of you may have seen my post. I have been so sick for the past three weeks. Flu, cold, I don't know. There was no cure. But it's because I flew from Los Angeles International Airport, home to Portland, Oregon, and I didn't think about being careful at all. I didn't wear a mask, I didn't wear gloves. I washed my hands after I used the bathroom and that was about it. And I have never been so sick in my life. So protect yourselves. Be careful, especially in airports. And there you go. Okay, on with the study session. The main character of Splash is named, her full name is Eliana Elizabeth Montgomery. They only actually say her name, her full name, once. Her parents call her Ellie or Elle, but most other people call her Splash, which was started by her older sister, Anais, when Eliana was only five years old. She, on her fifth birthday, they had a underwater theme for her birthday party and she did a cannonball and splashed into the pool, got everybody wet. And from then on, everybody called her Splash. Started by Anais, which hurt her feelings. Because Eliana was larger than most other kids. Her best friend, Viv, was also on the larger side, but she didn't struggle with it like Eliana did. I think mostly because Viv's mother was supportive and encouraging and didn't criticize her about her weight, whereas you will find out later Eliana's mom was pretty harsh. Anyway, Eliana has a dog, a pug, that she loves named Gigi. And Viv has a black and white cat named Oreo. And they are great friends, but sadly, no, Viv's mother catches Viv's father cheating and so they are going to move away from Texas to Indiana. So that's gonna make it hard for Eliana and Viv and their friendship, which does survive, but still, long distance. In spite of Anais being the one to give Ellie the mean nickname, she wasn't really mean to her, to her sister on a regular basis. She just, she didn't pay much attention to her. She was a senior in high school. Her Ellie's older brother, sixteen-year-old Liam, is mean. He, he's just a mean guy. He's a junior in high school and he teased and bullied Ellie a lot because of her weight. Really, the only place that Ellie feels comfortable is in the pool. When she's in the pool, she feels weightless. She feels like she can spread out like a starfish and take all the room she needs. In contrast to her fat girl rules that she makes for herself, which basically are about staying as small as possible, not attracting any attention to herself, not making loud noises or, or making herself be heard. She pretty much tries to shrink herself and stay unnoticed. And that's part of, part of her fat girl rules, but in the pool, she can just stretch out like a starfish and be herself. One day Ellie and Viv were in the swimming pool. And this is before Viv and her mom moved away, but they were gonna be moving. So they're in the swimming pool and they're playing music by a Latino band, Diaz Divertidas. And a new girl and her family has moved in on the other side of the wall from Ellie's family. Her name is Catalina Rodriguez and she loves this music. And so that's what gets her attention and she has a trampoline. So what Viv and Ellie see is Catalina's head popping up, up, up on the trampoline and her looking over the wall and seeing them and going, I hear Diaz Divertidas, woo! Catalina loves music. She writes music, she plays guitar. She loves the Latin music festival, especially Selena, makes her go wild. At first Ellie is nervous about meeting and making friends with Catalina because she assumes that Catalina's gonna treat her like everybody else, which is mean and bullying her and teasing her about her weight, but that does not happen with Catalina at all. And that's good timing because her best friend Viv is moving away. So it's a good thing that she already is starting to make friends with Catalina. Light pollution is when there are so many lights from city. Streetlights, lamps, store lights, whatever. So many lights in one place that you can't see any stars, or very many stars. If you go out into the desert and look up into the sky, you're gonna see millions and millions of stars because there's not a lot of lights out in the desert. Anyway, Ellie and Viv were looking up at the sky and they saw the brightest star in the sky, which is named Sirius. It's also called the Dog Star. They were able to see that star only because it's the brightest star in the sky. So let's talk about the bullies. School is not a comfortable place for Ellie. She's got three main enemies that bug her a lot. Enemy number one is a girl named Marissa. Enemy number two is Marissa's friend Courtney. And enemy, enemy number three is a boy who, I don't think we ever find out his name, but every time Ellie comes by in people, like in the cafeteria or in the hallway or whatever, this boy throws himself up against the wall and pretends that there's no room to move and like, ah, hurry, get out of the way, here she comes, she's so big, ah. So that's how it is for Ellie at her school. Unfortunately Ellie and Catalina did not attend the same schools. So Ellie went to Kaiser Academy, a very fancy private school. And Catalina went to Bishop Joseph Catholic School. So they're not together for school. Anyway, the best thing to Ellie about the beginning of the school year is going shopping for back-to-school supplies. Because Ellie loves to write. She writes poetry and stories and lyrics and things. So she likes school supplies, like cool pens and stuff. And so it's like she got some, some flamingo pens, real fancy with feathers on them. And she traded Catalina, one of her fancy flamingo pens for a light-up unicorn pen. Oh my gosh, I'm having so much fun with Snapchat filters. I chose this filter especially for the slide talking about Ellie's mother. Her mother is a journalist and she just, she basically terrorizes Ellie. She's the one who, who started Ellie on a diet when she was four years old, telling her she was fat. She, she won't buy Ellie any new school clothes because she says, she told Ellie's father that she wouldn't buy her any new school clothes because she gained weight over the summer and if they bought her new bigger clothes, it would just make her gain more weight. She goes through Ellie's trash can on a regular basis to see if she is cheating and sneaking food. She's just horribly controlling and horribly judgmental and critical and picking on Ellie all the time. So that's why I picked the Evil Queen for this. So, quick review of Ellie's family members. There's her father, whose name is Philip, and he is a psychiatrist. And he's very supportive of Ellie. He doesn't, he's a bit clueless. He doesn't really totally know what's going on or how she's being treated by a whole bunch of other people, but he is supportive and affectionate toward Ellie. There's her mother, who is the journalist, who I forgot to mention earlier. She also covers their kitchen, their refrigerator with all these articles about weight loss and diets and stuff. So the whole fridge is covered with those articles and that's gonna come up later. There's her older sister, Anais, who is seventeen years old. She's a senior in high school. And there is mean old Liam, the sixteen-year-old high school junior who has a red Mustang car that he drives because he's just so cool. Ellie's feeling kinda bad about herself. She, she loves Viv, her, her best friend who moved to Indiana, but she also is like thinking, oh, I hope she doesn't make another best friend. So that makes Ellie feel guilty. And Ellie's taking French in school. And so she's, she thinks that she stinks, like metaphorically. Because she's being mean in her head, not wanting Viv to have friends. So she's conjugating the verb to stink in French. I don't speak French. Hablo español. I also speak Russian a little bit. Ya pone mayo para ruski neonchi raso. But I don't speak French. So I've got my Google Translate right here so that you can hear how to say to stink in French. So here it is, listen up.
Pui.
Pui. I suddenly realized that maybe that's why we say puii or pew in English when something stinks. Maybe it comes from France. Words come from everywhere, you know. Mrs. Pochon is the name of the librarian at Kaiser Academy, Ellie's school. And the library is Ellie's safe place. That's where she feels comfortable and happy and not bugged by people. Mrs. Pochon is really nice and encouraging and accepting of Ellie. So Ellie likes to hang out in the library. Okay, this is a really creepy filter. But it's perfect for this word that Ellie had for when she made this face. Usually when her parents said something to her that she didn't like, she'd make a really big exaggerated smile and then frown immediately quickly like this. So she called it her smound. I'm going to be putting out a poll asking if you're enjoying these filters or if they are just distracting. I'm hoping that it makes these things more entertaining and maybe even gives them something stuck in your head like a smound. Anyway, she made a smound when her father mentioned Dr. Wood, which was the name of the new therapist that Ellie was going to go see. Ellie did not want to go see a therapist. Her mom had been dragging her to therapist after therapist who treated her pretty badly. Her dad, like I said, was kinda clueless. Anyway, her dad wanted her to go to see this one Dr. Wood because he knew that Ellie was getting her feelings hurt a lot and feeling bad about herself. But at first she was not happy about that at all. So she smowned. Eliana's mom's sister Zoe, so Ellie's Aunt Zoe, who was also always heavy growing up, suggested to Ellie's dad to take her shopping at this plus-sized clothing boutique for girls. And it was run by a woman named Diana, who, her, she was heavy herself growing up. And so her mother had started making clothes for her. Just really that complimented her body and looked good on her. And her mother was very accepting of her. Diana figured she's gonna make clothes that fit Diana rather than trying to make Diana fit the clothes. She called the clothes that they looked good on zaftig. Zaftig is a Yiddish word meaning pleasingly plump. Ellie knew some Yiddish because her grandma, also known as her bobeshi, had spoken Yiddish as well as English. She had passed away. But Ellie felt very close to her, to her grandma on her dad's side, her bobeshi. So anyway, while at the store, her dad bought her a orange and turquoise peasant shirt. Really cute, looked really cute on her. Orange and turquoise were Ellie's favorite colors. And so Ellie also noticed that Diana was just very comfortable. Very self-assured, confident, comfortable in her own skin. And, and she was wearing like a shirt with the, the sleeve kinda went down on her shoulder. And she, she was showing off her, her curves, her body. She didn't feel ashamed of herself. And so Ellie looked at her and wished that she could be more like that. As I mentioned before, Aunt Zoe, Ellie's mom's sister, had been heavy. And she eventually went as an adult and got bariatric surgery, which is a surgery where they clamp off part of your stomach so that you can't eat as much as you did before. But there were complications and Aunt Zoe almost died from this surgery. And so it is quite horrifying to Ellie and to me that her mom is pushing for Ellie to get the bariatric surgery. And remember Ellie's only like thirteen. So Ellie's dad says, no way. She's too young. This isn't happening. But there's stuff going on behind Ellie's dad's back by her mom. Ellie was kind of a peacekeeper. She did not want to cause problems. Like I said before, she always tried to just sort of stay hidden, make herself as small as possible, not draw attention. Anyway, their family had an interesting dynamic. Their, their dad was Jewish and their mother was Christian. And so they celebrated both holidays throughout the year. The parents let the kids choose what religion they actually wanted to follow and, and learn. And so Liam and Anais both chose Judaism, but Ellie chose both just because she didn't want to pick one parent over the other. She didn't wanna cause a problem between them. Ironically, there are problems between her parents. A lot to do with her weight and their different viewpoints about her and her weight and how to deal with it. And so Liam, he's, he's just, he blames her for when they fight. He even said to her that if their parents ever split up, it would be her fault. And remember, this is a sixteen-year-old guy telling a thirteen-year-old girl this. That's, that's some heavy stuff to lay on a person. So I told you before about Ellie's mom, how she would, you know, go through her trash and, and pick on her for her weight and put all these weight loss articles on the fridge and not buy her new clothes because she gained weight, all this stuff. So here's another wonderful sarcastically, I say, thing. The whole family could play piano, except for Ellie. Because Ellie asked for piano lessons for Christmas and her mother said she'd only let her have piano lessons if she lost weight. Oh my gosh. Anyway, so she would just punish Ellie for her weight. So her, her grandma on her mom's side, Grandma Montgomery, actually did teach Ellie how to play a song on the piano, All You Need Is Love by The Beatles. And she called that pulling a sneaky because they were doing it without Ellie's mother knowing about it. Ellie's grandma Montgomery, the one who taught her the song on the piano, said to her, no matter what you say or do, always embrace what makes you you. So it sounds like her grandma understood and accepted her way more than her own mother did. Dr. Wood ended up being very cool also. Dr. Wood had a border collie and Ellie could relate to that because, you know, she realizes Dr. Wood's a, a pet, an animal person. Ellie really loves animals, all animals, but she, she really loves her dog Gigi. And she told Dr. Wood that, she got Gigi from an animal shelter. And she told Dr. Wood that she loves animals and dogs because they listen. She, she feels that, that animals listen and they don't, they're not critical and they don't judge you. So that's why Ellie feels a special bond with animals and especially her dog Gigi. Ellie's mother again. Ellie's mother put her on her first diet when she was four years old with the words, you are fat. She put her on a grapefruit diet, which gave Ellie mouth sores. And because there's a lot of acid, citric acid in grapefruit, so that made her mouth sore. And then she tried putting her on a high-fiber diet and that gave Ellie hemorrhoids. Okay, let's talk about the Rodriguez family. Catalina's, the one that made friends with Ellie. Her father is named Eduardo. Her mother's name is Sonia. And Catalina is the baby of the family. She's got three older siblings. She's got two sisters. One is Natalia and the other one is Isabella, who they call Izzy. And she's got an older brother named Javier. All of them treat Ellie very well. They're really nice to her, very accepting. No problem, no teasing with her weight. I think that there is some empathy that they may have, that, that a lot of other people don't have. And that is that, as, as Catalina puts it, because they are Mexican-Americans living in Texas, which is right on the border between the United States and Mexico, a lot of people call them illegal aliens and they just assume that they're undocumented and they, they put up with a lot of prejudice, a lot of bigotry. So anyway, like when they're in a grocery store, Catalina defended Ellie against a woman who was just really rude, like, oh, you eat too much. And Catalina stood up for Ellie and said, well, you need to learn some manners. So Ellie realized that Catalina's family, although they were not dealing with people being mean to them because of their weight, they often had to deal with people being mean to them because of their ethnicity. One day Liam was supposed to be giving Ellie a ride home from school, but he wanted to take a girl to the mall. So he offered Ellie twenty bucks to take the bus instead. The problem was Ellie was not supposed to be taking public transportation by herself until she was thirteen. Anyway, she did it. She took his twenty bucks, either because she wanted the money or she wanted to please Liam because he was always so mean to her. I don't know. Anyway, while she was riding on the bus, there were some teenage girls making fun of her, teasing her for her weight. And then this woman pinched her cheek and called her chubby. So of course she got upset and when the bus stopped at the next stop, she got off. When she got off, she happened to run into her friend Catalina and her brother, Catalina's brother Javier. They're talking and all of a sudden there's tornado sirens. They live in Texas, in a, in an area where there are often tornadoes. And so when there's sirens going off, people are supposed to take shelter. So they did that. They ran into a store to take shelter. There was no tornado, but still it made Ellie late getting home. She told her parents what happened. She got in trouble. Her dad took away her phone. He said that Liam was gonna be in trouble too, but we never find out what happens to Liam. On another day Ellie's in her English class and she takes out a notebook she thought was hers, but it ends up being Liam's notebook journal. That Ellie figures her mother accidentally stuck Liam's journal into Ellie's backpack. Personally, I wouldn't put it past her mother to have done it on purpose. It never says that, but I, I wouldn't put it past her. Anyway, the book, the journal of Liam's is just full of his complaining about having a fat sister. He wishes that she wasn't his sister. He never gets to have any fun. He can't go on rides at amusement parks because she's too big to fit in them and he's just so embarrassed to be seen with her. And so this just breaks Ellie's heart. And so when she got home, she went out into their backyard where they have a chimenea, which is kind of like, hmm, how do I explain it? Look at the picture. It's like a ceramic fireplace for outside. And she burnt the pages of the journal inside it because she was really upset and really mad. And she got in trouble for, for burning, making a fire by herself. But she said later, why? Why did she burn it? Why didn't she just throw the pages in the trash? She said, ah, because mom, you always go through my trash, that's why. Because remember, her mom's always trying to find out if she's sneaking food and seeing if she can find any wrappers in there. Mrs. Boardman, Ellie's English teacher, told her students that reading was like eating from a buffet because there are so many different choices, different genres that you can read. And she encouraged her students to read lots of different genres, not just the one thing that was, happened to be their favorite. So like read fiction and nonfiction and poetry and all different kinds. Ellie told Mrs. Boardman that she was going to read Song For A Whale. And Mrs. Boardman loved that, said, oh whales are beautiful and, and unique and powerful. But of course, this also gave ammunition to Marissa and Courtney because they, you know, were gonna compare whales to Ellie. Anyway, Marissa had this annoying habit of whenever she would like say something, she'd clap five times fast. Ellie's family, her mom and dad, her brother Liam and her sister Anais, they all went on a family road trip up north, up through New England, through New Hampshire and Vermont and New York and up to the north part of New York where Niagara Falls is. Niagara Falls is between Canada and the United States on, on the New York line. Up at the top, the, the biggest of Niagara Falls is Horseshoe Falls. So they were there and looking at it and Ellie saw a group of girls from some other country. They were, they were speaking a language that Ellie did not understand. But she did see them looking at her and laughing and taking pictures of her. So anyway, she asked if she could take their picture and they said, oh yes, sure. And so they gave her their phone to take their picture. And when she did, she sneakily took out the memory card and threw it into Niagara Falls. She did end up feeling guilty about that later because Ellie's a nice girl, but, but yeah, that's what she did. And so like later, when she told Dr. Wood about it, Dr. Wood said to, to feel better about it or to get this off her chest, to write a letter to the girl. Of course, the girl would not get it, but just sort of to express herself and to confront the girl and tell the girl how they were making her feel. After the New England road trip, back at school again, Ellie was in math class, in Mr. Harrington's math class. And she sat down in her chair, in her desk, and the whole thing just collapsed. And she fell onto the floor and she was hurt and embarrassed and was crying and, and it was horrible. And it turns out that Courtney had loosened or taken off all the, all the nuts on the bolts. So she rigged it so that it would collapse. When anyone sat in it, she knew it would be Ellie. When she talked to Mr. Harrington, when Ellie did talk to the teacher about it, she noticed that he had a picture of his daughter on his desk and that his own daughter was heavy like her. And when he told Ellie that she should just ignore these people and, and, you know, not let them make her upset, she said that she hoped that he never said that to his own daughter because she deserved better. So Ellie's whole family found out about the collapsing chair and desk incident in math class because Liam was friends with Marissa's brother. So Liam announced what happened to the, to the whole family at dinnertime. And of course, he was just teasing Ellie about it. Ellie's dad got mad, called the school. That made, that made Courtney and Marissa completely ignore her. But it didn't really help much at all. Anyway, now Anais, Ellie's older sister, she was now starting to get the idea of everything that Ellie had been going through and feeling bad about it. So she, one night she went up to Ellie's room and sat down on her bed and Ellie's like, what do you want? Because she assumes the worst. And Anais apologized for being a bad sister, for not standing up and defending Ellie against Liam and their mother. But then Ellie pointed out to Anais that it was actually her fault that everybody called her Splash. And that, and that Anais had not called her her real name ever since then. Ever since she was five years old and now she was gonna be turning thirteen and always called her Splash. And so Anais really felt bad and started crying and, you know, just, just realized how she had been a part of it and, and not being good to Ellie. So especially after she saw the bruises on Ellie's body and realized that she really did get hurt. It made her feel really bad. So this kind of was a new start for Ellie and her sister. And the comparison was made to like an oyster forming a pearl. And the comparison was made to like an oyster forming a pearl inside it. A pearl is a beautiful and, and precious thing that actually starts from a piece of sand being inside the oyster and irritating it. So the sand builds up more and more, or the oyster builds up more and more around the piece of sand. Uh, and it's mother of pearl that's going around it until it becomes this, this beautiful thing. So, uh, it was kind of this, this incident with, with Ellie falling that, you know, brought Anais to her and them talking and maybe forming a different kind of relationship than they ever had had before. In history class, Ellie did a report on how society's ideals of beauty have changed over the years. If you actually do look back at artwork from ancient times, um, ancient Greece, Renaissance, Baroque artwork, a lot of the sculptures and paintings show overweight people, or I guess it wasn't overweight to them at the time, right? Yeah. But they show heavy people, uh, people that are now considered obese were seen to be beautiful and, and it was actually preferred at the time. So that was what Ellie did her report about as, as showing how society's ideas have changed about what is beauty and what does it look like. At one of her therapy appointments, Dr. Wood had Ellie shake a bottle of pop. Actually do that and let her make a mess. Shake the bottle of pop and then open it so that it sprayed everywhere because it was carbonated to illustrate what it's like when you try to hold anger in for a long time. When it finally does get released, whatever triggers it and it gets released, it makes a big mess. So Dr. Wood was trying to encourage Ellie to stand up for herself and confront her bullies. At the same time, when Ellie like stood up to Marissa and Courtney and, and did it by attacking them and, and insulting them, it made her feel horrible. Because Ellie's a nice person. It's not who she is. And so Dr. Wood was teaching her how to stand up to and confront her bullies and be assertive and say, you cannot treat me this way, um, without actually attacking them, which just made her feel worse. The librarian, Mrs. Pochon, asked Ellie to volunteer, to work as an assistant in the library. And then she could eat lunch in the library. This made Ellie feel really good because the library was her safe place. If she could eat in the library, she wouldn't have to deal with people bullying her in the cafeteria. So that was awesome. Uh, but then, and, and so one of her jobs was like setting up a display to showcase the new releases, the new books that had come into the library. So she was getting ready to do this and then she found out that she was being teamed up with the kid that she considered enemy number three, that boy, uh, who would always like throw himself up against the wall and go, oh no, watch out. Here she comes. She's so huge. Uh, that's who she got teamed up with. And so she wasn't real thrilled about that. But then, uh, they start working on a display of, of books about bullying. And, you know, trying to discourage bullying and putting up books like Fish In A Tree and books like that about kids who, um, for one reason or another are seen as different by other kids and are often given a bad time about it. So anyway, the, the boy is talking to Ellie and she notices in his artwork, he uses a lot of like really strong colors like red and purple and black, uh, to express his anger and, and his hurt. And she finds out that he also is bullied. Um, the reason he's bullied is because he's, his family doesn't have much money. And he wears a lot of hand me down clothes and old clothes. And so people bully him about that. Ellie does find it quite ironic though, that a kid who's being bullied is turning around and bullying her. Um, and that does sound weird. It sounds like it shouldn't make sense, but it kind of does. There is, it reminds me of this saying, hurt people, hurt people. I know it sounds weird, right? It's just two words repeated, but listen how you say it. Hurt people, like people who have been hurt, turn around and hurt other people. They think it's gonna make them feel better. It doesn't. But, uh, if they're not taught other ways to respond, they're just like expressing their anger and, and rage and hurt in whatever way they can. Uh, and usually that involves picking on somebody that they feel is less power than they are. So I find that's a very strong saying, hurt people, hurt people. And I, I see that often in this world. One day Catalina came over to Ellie's house and went in her room and noticed that there were no mirrors in Ellie's room. Well, it turns out that Ellie had stopped looking in mirrors ever, uh, a long time ago. Since the day that her mother made her stand in front of a full length mirror while she pointed out Ellie's imperfections, her stretch marks, her fat rolls, um, her cellulite, which is where the, the, it's kind of bumpy looking skin. Uh, and just said, aren't you, you should be ashamed of yourself. Aren't you ashamed of yourself? So ever since that day, she was pretty traumatized. Obviously she never looked in mirrors again. For a, uh, birthday present for Ellie, when she turned thirteen, her parents gave her a plane ticket to Indiana, to Kokomo, Indiana, to, uh, visit her friend Viv, her best friend who had moved there. So she was gonna give, spend the whole Thanksgiving break with Viv. And she did, and they had a wonderful time. Um, they watched the movie with Bill Murray called Groundhog Day. And they built a snowman, no, a snow woman. They built a snow woman. It was all bumpy and, and imperfect as, as a woman should be. Uh, and so they had a great time and, and also Ellie noticed that in Viv's house on their fridge, there were notes all over it, just like there were little notes and things all over her fridge at home. Except that at home, Ellie's fridge was covered with diet articles and losing weight articles and stuff like that. Whereas at Viv's house, it was just full of nice, sweet little notes that she and her mother wrote to each other. So, um, this is what Ellie really wanted, a mother who loved and accepted her for who she was. When Ellie got home from the Thanksgiving break that she spent with Viv, she took off all the articles from the fridge that her mom had put up about losing weight and replaced them with magazine and newspaper articles that she had found herself on how parents could af- actually be, uh, often their children's worst bullies. And how parents could, uh, hurt their children's self-image and self-esteem. So she started sending messages back to her mother. Another thing she did that got her in big trouble, but she felt pretty good about it is she took her scale and threw it into the trash, trash can. She didn't just throw it in there. She put it underneath the dog do. So if her mom wanted to get it out of there, she had to go through dog do. Uh, and the reason she did that was because her mom was always making her weigh herself. So when she says, her mom said, we're gonna weigh yourself. Where's the scale? She's like, it's in the trash can. And of course her mom got mad and said she was grounded and, and everything. But, uh, Ellie was finally starting to learn with Dr. Wood's help to stand up to her, for herself and stand up against her mom. So as I mentioned before, Ellie's family was Jewish on her father's side, Christian on her mother's side. So, so in December, their family celebrated both Hanukkah, which commemorates the miracle of the oil lasting for the Maccabees. Uh, eight days, which was, there was not enough oil. So that was a miracle. And also Christmas that commemorates the birth of Jesus Christ. So they celebrated both these holidays. Uh, in Ellie's head, she put them together and called it Christmika. And so, uh, Ellie gave to Catalina, her friend, a leather bound journal with music, uh, paper inside so that, because she knew that Catalina wrote songs. And Catalina gave to Ellie a mirror, uh, that's, that was in like pounded, um, Mexican foil and tiles framed. Look at the picture, really pretty. But yeah, she gave her a mirror, uh, which remember Ellie had been avoiding looking in mirrors for years. And Catalina was basically saying, accept yourself. You're beautiful as you are. Look in the mirror. During Christmas time, one of the things that Ellie, Ellie's family did was they would go to the, the mission, um, the homeless mission and help out there, volunteer, serve meals. And so they were there and when Ellie went into the pantry to get something, she saw the boy that can she considered enemy number three trying on shoes. He didn't see her, but she saw him and, uh, she just, you know, realized that his life was not very good. Later on, when they got home, um, Ellie and her dad went outside and made s'mores in the chimenea. And she burned her fat girl rules, which shows that she was learning from Dr. Wood how to throw away all the negative thoughts that had been embedded into her mind through the years and replace them with true and positive thoughts about herself. So Ellie's mom goes behind Ellie's dad's back, doesn't tell him. Uh, and remember he had said that no way was Ellie gonna be getting bariatric surgery. She was too young. He wasn't gonna allow it, but her mom took her to a bariatric surgeon's office. Uh, and when they were, when they went in and Ellie saw the guy, the surgeon, he had a big belly himself. And so he, she was like, well, who are you to be, you know, talking about being overweight? And then it was like, well, we're here to talk about you. And, um, so anyway, she was getting irritated by the whole thing. And her mom made the remark, Ellie, we're just trying to fix you. And so Ellie grabbed the scissors off the bariatric surgeon's desk, held it to her own stomach and said, let's just go ahead. Let's just cut off all the fat. Let's fix me. Let's fix me now. And he freaked out and said, you guys have to leave or I'm gonna call security. And so they did, they left. Of course Ellie's mom was really mad and they were fighting. And, uh, they got home and they were still yelling at each other. So then Ellie's dad heard and said, what's going on? And when he found out, he was just livid and apologized to Ellie. And then he and Ellie's mom went into their room and shut the door. And in Ellie's words, they had the biggest fight of their life. One day Gigi, Ellie's pug, went missing. And then a little bit later, Ellie received a note that said, I've got your dog. Come by yourself, come alone. And it was from Marissa. So Ellie went to Marissa's house. Marissa opened the door. She and Courtney were there. They had, Marissa was holding Gigi. And Courtney had a big whale shaped cake. And they told Ellie that if she wanted Gigi back, she had to eat the whole cake herself. And, uh, she just said, no, I'm, I'm not gonna do it. You're gonna give me my cake back, but I'm not gonna eat that. And, um, then they're like, well, it's two against one. And, uh, Courtney tried to shove the cake at Ellie. Ellie pushed it back and it went all over Courtney's face. And then all of a sudden, Anais, Catalina and Javier, oh, and Natalia and Isabella, all Catalina's siblings and her own sister Anais showed up and said, uh, it's not two against one. It's a lot against you guys. And Catalina was recording the whole thing. So she got it on recording on the phone. The cake going all over Courtney, uh, which Ellie was tempted to post online, but then realized that if she did that, she'd be just as mean and nasty as the two of them were. And so she didn't, uh, and so she got Gigi back and, and I think that kind of ended Marissa and Courtney, at least outwardly, obviously bullying her because they, she stood up to them finally. So at the end of the book, or toward the end of the book, Ellie has both of her parents, mom and dad, come to Dr. Wood's office so that Ellie can confront her mom and tell her how she feels. Dr. Wood, in a show of support, uh, moved over by Ellie. So she was right next to Ellie and her parents were directly across from her. And Ellie told her mother that she felt like her mother didn't love her, didn't love her as she was unconditionally. She felt like to her mother, her, that Ellie's worth was associated with her weight on the scale. And then she gave her mom the book that Dr. Wood had had her fill with all the mean words and things that her mother had said to her. Um, you know, she, she had that all in the book and she told her mom, the weight on my body was never as heavy as the weight of your words on me. And now it's your turn to carry that weight. And she handed the book to her mother. In Dallas, Texas, there actually is a mural called The Whaling Wall with humpback whales painted on it. And in the book, uh, Ellie and her sister Anais are driving in the car. And Ellie sees it. She had seen it before. She had just forgotten that it was there. It had Anais drive by again because she really loved it. And she realized how beautiful humpback whales are. They're big, they're strong, they're powerful, they're beautiful, and they sing pretty. At the end of the book, Ellie, Catalina and Viv, who is visiting her dad for the summer in Texas, are all floating in Ellie's pool and talking. And Ellie tells them how she is never gonna stop starfishing, which means she's gonna accept herself and take up all the room she needs to be herself. So that's it for this wonderful book, Starfish by Lisa Phipps. Please subscribe to my channel. Hopefully I won't be sick for years to come. And so the videos, hopefully I plan to do one a month, uh, different grade levels. So, uh, subscribe to my channel, follow me on Facebook, follow me on Instagram, and please spread the word. Okay. Thank you from the Battle of the Books Quiz Center. I'll see you next time. Bye.